I'd like to welcome you to the August 19th West Des Moines City Council Meeting. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, please sign in. Five members present. Okay, Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
Move.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item two is Citizens Forum, which is the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on any items that are not part of item six, public hearings, or item seven, new business. With one caveat, I think we're gonna at least pull item four F on the special event lane closure, so we'll take public comments separately on that. And then I think we might, we'll pull four U as well. So if there's anyone here that wants to talk about any of the consent agenda items except F or U, Citizens Forum would be the appropriate time for that as well. Okay? We'll move on to Mayor's City Council. City Manager Presentations, we'll start with three A. The presentation of the donation for our new canine officer vest. Yeah, please, yeah. We know you, but the TV people want to know who you are, so we'll need your name and your address.
All right. Justin Trevillion, 2465 Elton Place, Swan, Iowa, formerly of West Des Moines. Mayor, Council, Chief Scott. On behalf of the members of Neemath Lodge Number 577, AF and AM located in Valley Junction, West Des Moines, I'd like to present a check for the purchase of the canine vest for Canine Murphy, the West Des Moines Police Department, this evening.
Well, great, we have Chief Scott behind you and we have, yeah, we have Murphy and Officer Russell here. I got a chance to meet them last Friday during a swearing-in. That's a pretty intense dog. So I said, "I love German Shepherds." My daughter's got a German Shepherd service dog, and the chief said, "Hey, I'd advise, don't even try to pet this dog right now." Yeah, he's on full alert for everything, so we really sincerely appreciate that. We view these dogs as truly an officer. I remember what amount of work Ronnie did as far, and I think Officer Russell mentioned that within 10 minutes after getting here, after he brought the dog down, he got a call on a stop, and what'd he find? Forty pounds of meth in a car or something. First couple of weeks, so.
Picture's up on the screen, so everybody can see the 44 pounds of meth, what it looks like.
That's excellent.
So it's a big deal. That's somewhere in the ballpark of $300,000 to $500,000 free value, so the dog that you are providing a life vest for has already produced some good quality work.
Very good.
And I think Officer Russell and Murphy both performed exceptionally well up at the canine school. And he, not to dig deep into Officer Russell's life, but he fought through some illness, but committed to the program, never missed a beat. The dog and Officer Russell finished top of their class, so we're very excited about the product we're bringing to the city and the vest that goes to these dogs, from my understanding, and it's personalized to dogs because they're all built a little bit differently. So it's a big deal. We treat them as an officer. They're gonna wear a vest and a badge, just like a cop would, and you guys are participating in that donation, so thank you very much for doing that for us.
Yeah, no, that's very much appreciated. And Officer Russell, thank you for your dedication. I know what it is to, you know, be responsible for an animal like that. And like I said, I'm pushing hard to get a second one, so I'm willing to do whatever it needs to do to help to get that done, because we'd love to see it.
Thank you.
Have a dog available almost around the clock.
Steve, picture with Olive, so we can put it on the city's website.
Just curious, how much does, Chief Scott, how much does one of those vests cost?
Well, what's it, somewhere around $1,000 to $1,500.
Rene, you don't drive around in a little car.
Everybody's afraid to be next to a person.
You don't drive around in a little car.
Yeah. He's like, "Hey, come on, there's way too many people here."
Get behind.
Yeah, no. Go out.
I don't know. I've never heard of that.
We appreciate all that.
Another time, Your Honor.
Kevin?
Nothing. Well, I guess I do have one thing I want to say. Saturday, August 31st, from 10:30 to noon at the Valley Junction Activity Center, 217 Fifth Street, it's gonna be my quarterly town hall meeting, so anybody that wants to attend, show up and let's talk.
Russ?
The only report that I would give is that we are just moving and shaking on DART. Not only are we looking at, you know, going out for different modes of transportation, they're gonna be having a discussion on scooters, that's gonna be more for the city of Des Moines and what they allow, but looking at all different modes of transportation or micro-transportation, whatever you want to say, to try to come up with the best, most efficient, effective model possible for DART. Along with that, we are gonna be starting here, I believe, in September. They're gonna be doing, reaching out to all of the councils. They're gonna talk to the mayors of each one of the councils and/or the commissioner, the person from the city that's on DART, do some interviews on the services provided by DART, and this is all in preparation for looking at the funding formula and having discussions, very serious discussions, on changing that funding formula to better line cost and benefits. So we are really delving into things there, Dart.
Okay, John?
Another time, Your Honor.
Rene?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Just want to remind folks that the Taste of the Junction, I hope that's gonna happen, is happening the last weekend of August. It really is a way to celebrate some things in that particular area of West Des Moines, is where West Des Moines started, so I'm gonna do all I can to try to help make sure that's successful, but it's Taste of the Junction, come out and support it. And then tomorrow night, I'm attending at 5 o'clock a library trustee meeting. That is certainly looking to the public as well, to really learn about one of our crucial assets here in West Des Moines, and that's our library. It's well-used by folks from other municipalities. I see Darrell here, and so lots of great information you can learn about where the library's going, some strategic initiatives they're facing, and the partnership we have with the Friends of the Library. So, and then we also had, I also had a development planning meeting this morning with Councilman Sendager, talked about a variety of issues, one of which I just want the public to know that we focus on a lot of things that make West Des Moines what it really is, and one of the things he talks about is sign on its ordinances versus artwork. You'd be amazed how much discussion goes into what artwork is and what signage is and all of that, and, but come to those meetings and learn about what that's all about, because we certainly spent a lot of time on the come and go signs this morning in terms of the epiphan and whether it's order signage, and I think we landed on a good compromise that's gonna work for come and go, so.
Okay. Tom?
Yes, I just attended a West Des Moines Water Works meeting this afternoon as a liaison for the city, and the, just the thing I want to bring up is a regionalization. That's been a long-time discussion. It's still a long-time discussion. They're trying to, the West Des Moines Water Works is working to do some capacity well testing on the Raccoon River, and it seems like there's always some type of issue, either the water's too high, or just a heavy rain, or whatever, to get those, and then they're doing an engineering review on the cost of the treatment plant between West Des Moines Water Works and Walkee, and then Des Moines Water Works is working out there with Urban Dell and others. So it's a long, drawn-out process, but hopefully through this, a good decision will be made on where we go or where they go from here. Thank you.
Okay. I mentioned last Friday, I had the privilege to swear in two new police officers and another chaplain, and we all got to meet Murphy, so Chief Scott keeps adding to our repertoire down there, but he always gets a great turnout, and it's always a great event over at the police station for all of that, so. All right, consent agenda, I already mentioned that we were gonna pull four F and four U. Are there any other items that any council member wants to pull off, the consent agenda item?
Four C four, four Q five, and four T.
Sure there are any more?
Well, I was thinking.
What ones D you want to leave on?
Four C four. Yep, four C four. Okay. Four Q five. There's a lot, I mean, Brian's been very busy. And then the last one is?
Four.
Four T.
Okay. You want to move the rest?
I'll move the remainder.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Four C four is renewal of the beer permit for Fox Brewing. You want to abstain?
Yep, I just need to abstain from that vote.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, four F is a motion to approve the special event lane closure and waiver of city code requirement Taste of the Junction multicultural festival, August 31 of 2019. I don't see Rochelle here. I know the Follets are here, and they sent a letter objecting to the closure. I think our ordinance would require normally a 75% consent by the property owners, and there's four of them. I think Rochelle got two of the four. I think the speech and debate folks she wasn't even able to speak with, I think they're closed on Saturdays. But I know the Follets are here, and they've sent us a letter, so Gary or Shirley, this would be your opportunity, if you wanted to come up and share some additional concerns or stuff with us in addition to the letter that you sent, which we have. So if you'd come on up here and share your name and address with us. And then the council's just gonna have to make the decision tonight on whether or not to waive the 75%, but Dick, did you say the speech and debate, they're not open on Saturdays?
That's my understanding, Your Honor.
So please, share your name and your address.
Oh, yeah, William Gary LaFollette. It's gonna be on Saturday. I have our business over at 415 Railroad Place in Des Moines, so I just want to say hello to all the council members. We don't object to the different events that do end up on our street, but it seems like during September and August, late August, there's like four events a lot of times appear fairly close amount of time, and we just would like to have maybe one or two of the events shift to other parts, like over on Elm Street maybe, or also over into the park off of Fourth, just to kind of move things around, not always be on Fifth Street, Run Railroad Place, you know. I mean, I like the Taste of Junction, it's a good, it's really nice, it's really great, but then when you have a lot of other things that come along at the same time, it's just kind of affects our business enough, you know?
Yeah.
So I know they've already got the date picked and where it was gonna be at, and maybe already, flyers already sent out for it, and I don't want to object to it, I mean, I can't say no to it this year, but at least I want, I think, for future times to consider maybe doing other locations.
Yeah, I think the problem, the challenge we have is we have that venue down there and the restrooms, and so everybody gets used because of the farmer's marker and stuff
Yep, yep, yep.
To that, so I think part of the challenge is, it's got the band enclosure, the stage, and it's got the restrooms outside, so that's probably where everybody focuses on that street.
Right.
And in the future, we're gonna be improving the restrooms down there as well, making a significant investment, so.
Right, oh, yeah.
But I hear, I hear exactly what you're saying. It's always your portion of the street that's closed.
Once in a while, yeah. Because I know even over in Elm Street, you got, there's a good parking lot, you got the, there's the city access to the restrooms over there as well, too, but.
Do you get any traffic from those events? Does that bring anybody down that ends up coming into your business?
It brings some traffic, but then the other people that do come in, they won't have a place to park, to, you know, to load up with furniture and things if they buy that and so forth.
Okay.
So it's kind of, it's a mixed bag. It's like, I want to support things, but it's like, if it's every, it seems like, it seems like there's three or four, maybe three weeks out of September, August, they kind of go in groups and they're, and then it kind of throws things off a little bit, so.
Well, since the flyers already went out, and they've already gotten the funding, they've had it, would you be opposed to the council granting it this year, and then we'll see what we can, if there's anything else we can do, starting next year on all these events that seem to hit you guys around the same time?
Right, right. If it could kind of do that, would you be okay with that, Shirley?
I don't think she heard.
You want to repeat that?
Would you be okay with going ahead?
Also, they're gonna have, you're gonna close our street for all events this year.
Yeah, we're talking about trying to come up with a better game plan for next year on all these events, and some of them probably are better events to close that than maybe others, depending on what. The one about this is, it goes back to the heritage of the city.
Right, right, right.
And so that, you know, I'm not gonna pick winners and losers, but maybe there's some other events, people said, "You know, I really don't need that street, I can use a different one."
Right. Well, I was just thinking, even like, if there's something else coming up in the near future, that the flyers aren't already made out for and so forth, that maybe you might consider moving one of them, if you could.
Well, we'll, yeah, we'll flag the ones for next year when you got a better chance to have a conversation, to see if some of those events are willing to try to find a different location down there.
Okay, appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'll have to, we'll need you to come on up here.
Shirley LaFollette, 415 Railroad Place. Okay, I had sent that identical letter last year, and nothing happened, because all the events, all the people are coming around for us to sign things, agreeing to close our street this year. So is this going to be the same kind of thing?
No.
Well, I think what's changed this year is, is that she didn't get 75% of the property owners to consent. If she gets three out of the four next year, then, I mean, the policy's set up that if you get 75% of the property owners, then it's okay, because you got a super majority of them. So you may not, we may not have reached out last year, because I think she got three of the four to sign it, saying it was okay.
But what we're saying is, we're gonna talk to the rest of the events down there and see if they can't move their weekends around a little bit, so you're not getting bombarded two, three, four in a row.
Right, right.
With the street being closed.
That's what I would appreciate, yeah.
Yeah, because it's really hard to run a business with your street closed.
Yeah.
Right.
That would be a challenge.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Well, let's make sure, Tom, that we reach out to those events that seem to bunch up around then, and see if there's a few of them, maybe that can, we got a different location in Valley Junction that may work just as well for them. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Then Tom, Tom, can we make sure that we communicate that to all the property owners of what we're, what we're doing next year, in case they've got the same concerns? Thank you.
And I just want to say, I really appreciate your flexibility, because the train really is down the track, so appreciate your understanding this year and lots of communication next year, because the event is two weeks, so appreciate your willingness to be flexible.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Someone want to move four F?
I'll move it.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Four Q five is a resolution to approve professional services agreement for 39th Street and EP Drew Parkway Hawk Beacon, Russ.
I just want to applaud staff and thank staff for going out, doing the work on this, doing the study. You know, this is gonna be a big deal. These things are very expensive, but this is, we've heard, I've heard, Councilman Trevillion, I'm sure, has heard a lot, I think everybody has heard about this, with kids going to Western Hills and crossing, and a lot of the kids living in those apartments there. This is just gonna really increase, I think, safety for these kids, and I think this is a good investment by the city, and I just really appreciate, you know, public services looking at this and coming up with a solution, so.
Thanks for coming up, Brian.
Yeah. I got another one, too.
You just stay up there. You need to stay up there.
I would just, I would just move four Q five.
Yeah, all right, please vote.
Five yes.
Four T, resolution to approve the policy for inspection and enforcement of stormwater pollution prevention activities, Russ.
Okay, so the only thing I have on this is, you know, there are a lot of times where we go out and do an inspection, and then, you know, if things are looking okay, then we waive the fee and everything else, which, you know, I'm fine, but there's a lot of things that we have in the city, it seems to me, where the fee doesn't cover our expense. I just want to make sure that this is written such that it's fair to the business that we're inspecting, and it's fair to the city, that we're not putting this on the backs of the general taxpayer, because we're not collecting enough. I mean, I'm seeing a number of times where in the second violation, we come out, if it's, if things are good, the fee gets waived, no one pays that, but has that been, I'm sure that's been looked at and balanced carefully? I mean, that's what I'm worried about.
Brian Hemaset, city engineer. Essentially, what, if they, they get charged for the first inspection, and if they are still in violation, which is basically causing us more of an effort to come out again, then that's when they would get charged. If we come out and everything looks great, we wouldn't want to charge them again for...
But you're still coming out to do an inspection and make sure that everything looks great?
We are. And that, that's pretty, that's pretty routine.
Okay.
So it, it's when, it's when we have to come out that second, third, or a third, fourth, fifth time, that's when things get, get a little frustrating.
And we've got an escalating fee on that second, third, fourth, okay.
Right, so, yeah, if we find a violation, you know, it might have been something they just overlooked, we don't, we don't want to bust them in the chops for that. We want to come out, get them, get them taken care of and move forward.
Yeah.
But if they, if they continually do it, that's when we want to kind of put the hammer down, I guess.
Well, and I spent quite a bit of time on this one, too, Russ.
Yeah.
With Brian and Tom. I mean, the second re-inspection's $500. The normal inspection fee all over central Iowa's 50 bucks. It's 500, and if it's bad enough, if Brian and Tom say they can put a stop work order on the site, which is gonna really cause some issues.
Sure.
So there's, to me, there's a lot of, there's a lot of meat in this.
Okay.
Yeah, we're hoping that with these, these updated criteria, that we'll, people will see that, and we'll just, we'll get, it's just from the threat of that being out.
Yeah, I just think our fee policy, I like our fee policy, I mean, we, we just want to charge what we need to, to cover our costs of doing whatever it is that we're having to do, so.
We definitely weren't covering that before.
Okay.
On all the inspections we were making. We basically had $50, and then that was it.
Okay.
Unless we had a municipal infraction and went through the full, the full legal recourse, that's the only way we could.
It goes to 500 in the second, and a thousand after that, but the stop work order's probably the bigger.
It is.
Concern for a construction site.
That costs them way more money than 500 or a thousand.
We don't want to charge business more than we need to, but at the same time, just want to make sure we're covering our costs. It sounds like we've got that here, so.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian, I appreciate it. I would just move four T.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Four U, resolution approving the revised agreement regarding construction and naming of the city campus amphitheater. Richard Hurd and his family, John, I know you pulled that, and I know the Hurd family's here.
Yeah, so a couple of years ago, we came up with what we called game changer projects for our community, and frankly, a lot of those were kind of pipe dreams, so ones that, you know, we didn't have funding for, they were kind of dreams that if we could ever accomplish one or a few of them, would be, would be a great day. And today, we're one step closer to getting one of them completed, thanks to the generosity of the Hurd family who's here tonight. Richard, Linda, Daniel, Kristen, Richie, you're all here, and the really neat thing, not only are we gonna get one of these game changer projects done, but the neat thing is this family, I believe, all lives in West Des Moines, or most of them do. Their business is in West Des Moines. They've done a lot of high-quality projects in West Des Moines on the real estate side. They're relocating their business to another building in West Des Moines, and now our game changer project, which will be right outside the door here, will honor one of their family members in perpetuity and honor her legacy. And so, Richard, I don't know if you want to come up and say a few words about the Jamie Hurd Amphitheater, or anyone else in your family for that matter, don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
Richard Hurd, 2000 Fuller Road. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, members of staff, we want to thank you for the opportunity to work together on what we believe is an important project, civic project for the city of West Des Moines, and we look forward to the day when we have the ribbon cutting and it's open, and the citizens of West Des Moines can enjoy it. And we look forward to many years of it being used as a, as an amenity for the city, and hopefully it's the start of many, you know, additional projects we can do in concert with the city of West Des Moines. So thank you all.
Yeah.
And the staff, everyone that's worked on this. I know Dick's worked very hard on this project as well, and so thank you all for your assistance.
And Tom, are we hoping that this is done and open next fall? Fall of 2020? Is that one more? Yep. So hopefully, fall of 2020, this one and the boathouse were the first two we started with, so hopefully they're both open, starting next fall. I know we've been promoting this a lot, and people are anxious.
Yes.
Because there's so many different uses for it, and they love, it's the central, the city school campus.
Yes.
So I think there's gonna be a ton of activity there.
Yes, well, we're, we're excited to see it come to life, and we thank you very much. And hopefully, I know a couple of the council members are going off, but we'll have a chance to work with your successors.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hurd family. Really appreciate it.
I'd just like to say, as someone who's passionate about the arts myself, and how that is such a quality of life issue for the city of West Des Moines, I'm so thrilled to have your generosity advance that for our community. It really is significant. And I know it was some time in coming, but your generosity never wavered, and I thank you that you have a chance to honor a legacy and a memory that's important to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, someone want to move?
I'll move it.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, item five, old business, 5A, Cedar Ridge, southwest corner of Coach Light Drive and South 91st Street. amend the planned unit development to change zoning in parcel D from medium-density residential to single-family. Toby Tortinson, it's an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes from the first reading.
Move.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes, an ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, and ordinance number 2311 pertaining to PUD district regulations and guidelines.
Move through the second reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Move through the reading, adopt in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Wow, this guy's an auctioneer.
Mm-hmm. Five yes.
Five B, amendment to city code title six, motor vehicles and traffic, chapter one, titles and definitions, and chapter six, parking regulations. Clarify the definitions of parking and the unlawful use of handicap parking stalls. City initiated. This is an ordinance as well for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes, an ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by many title six, motor vehicles and traffic, chapter one, title and regulations, section two, definitions, and chapter six, parking regulations, section five, handicap parking.
Move approval the second reading?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Move waving in third reading, adopt in final form?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Five C, amendment to city code titled eight, building regulations, chapter six, construction site erosion and sediment control, modify the procedures and requirements for stormwater management. City initiated, this is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There was a, there was a minor change made to make sure that the ordinance was in compliance with the state and the federal permit requirements, so that was the only change that was made.
Move consideration, second reading.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? I see it came through Public Services Council Committee as well. Okay, please vote.
Five yes, an ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by many title eight, building regulations, chapter six, construction site erosion and sediment control, to modify the authority procedures and requirements for stormwater management.
Move approval, the second reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Move waiver, third reading, adoption, and final form.
Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, public hearings, item 6A, the council's being asked to continue this to the September 16th.
Second.
I guess a question, is there any timing issues for this? Because we had a lack of a quorum at P&amp;Z, which is hard to believe, we can't get four out of seven people. But I don't want to penalize the applicant, because it wasn't their issue.
Lynn Tweak, Director of Development Services. No, there is not. In fact, the request to delay is becoming from the applicant.
What was said in here is because we didn't have a quorum from P&amp;Z.
Right, we didn't have a quorum, but we were requesting at that time to continue to the September 16th.
Okay, please vote on the motion to continue.
Five yes.
Item 6B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Mid-American Energy Rexplex, pre-engineered metal building initiated by the city of West Des Moines, Ryan. Would you please read the date the notice was published?
August 9th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6B. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together, and this also came through Public Services Council.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 7, new business, one item, 7A, Lot 36, West Green Industrial, Platte 1, Platte Survey, 175 South 9th Street, subdivide property for ownership transfer, next phase development LLC. It's a resolution to approve and release the Platte Survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 8, there are no items to receive, file, and/or refer. Item 9, other matters, are there any other matters that any council member wants to raise tonight?
Can we, can we vote against John and Jim stepping down or not running for reelection? Because
Well, we'll have our opportunity to talk about these guys.
All right, we'll save it up. We'll save that vote up.
Yeah, all right, word adjourned, thank you.